Council come to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, would you please call the roll?
DeYoung.
Here.
Brainerhorst.
Here.
Dan Struck.
Here.
Eva.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Spoor.
Here.
All right, well, this is our first meeting where we've had guests for a while, so appreciate all you coming. But we still do have an option for people to dial in and participate in the meeting on the phone. So those of you that might be participating on the phone, you will, we will provide times for verbal comments during the dedicated public forums and public hearings. So we ask that you please keep your microphones or telephones on mute until you speak. And if you're viewing the meeting presentation online, you could experience a delay. If this occurs, the full meeting presentation can also be viewed at the City of Pella website. I need to announce we'll have a policy and planning session after our regular council meeting tonight to discuss three different things. We're going to get a presentation from Pace Alliance regarding proposed project ideas. We're going to review a request from the Pella Disc Golf Club and review requests from the Friends of Big Rock Park to conduct an environmental study. Could I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
Brainerhorst, Spoor, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Dan Struck.
Yes.
Eva.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. We are going to go into closed session, so do I have a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter 21.5, Paragraph 1C, to discuss strategy with council and matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation? Second. DeYoung, Dan Struck, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Dan Struck.
Yes.
Eva.
Yes.
Hopkins.
We can't sue.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Motion passed. So we will be going into closed session, so everyone's going to have to be patient, wait patiently for us. We promise to come back. And if you are on the phone, the phone will be muted, but we will, when we get back into open session, we will put you back into the session. So we are, we're going to go to the chief's quarters for our closed session. So we are back in open session. Is there any council member who has a motion regarding our closed session?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the member's understanding with the Iowa Regional Utilities Association discussed in the closed session.
Master, DeYoung, any discussion? All those in favor, say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Eva.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
Motion passed. Just a reminder to those that are at the meeting on the phone or computer, please mute your mics unless you're going to speak. You're getting a little background noise, so. Okay, so at this time, we have time for a public forum. Just a reminder, I know there's a lot of people in here that probably want to speak. Some of the items that were on our agenda tonight have, we are having a public, open meeting about. So if you're here to talk about those items, please wait until we get to that, that open session to talk about those. If there's any other agenda items other than those that have a scheduled public hearing, anybody who wants to comment on those, now is the time to do that. Just things that are on our agenda at this point. Okay, seeing none, we will move on. I need a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved. Spoor.
Brainerhorst, Spoor, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Dan Struck.
Yes.
Eva.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. All right, so now we'll move to one of those public hearings I was talking about. Item 1A, a public hearing regarding a rezoning application to change the zoning classification of land located at or near 503 Main Street to a proposed planned unit development. Mike, please walk us through this request.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to. And for those following at home, I'm on slide number two. For the mayor and council, I'd like to refer your attention to the big board for the presentation on this item. As Mayor Ward stated, what we're discussing this evening is a proposed planned unit development for 503 Main Street. And we'll be explaining what exactly a planned unit development is throughout the presentation. It is important to note that the area that we're talking about sits up here in this yellow area. And just orientate everyone here. This is at the intersection of Main Street and Independence Street. And it's just south of the New Casey's and just north of the new South Main Development. Now, in essence, what's being proposed tonight by the developers is a concept that's fairly unique to small-town Iowa. What they're proposing is the Pella Market, which is intended to be very similar to the Gateway Market in the Des Moines Metro area. And we do have a description of the Pella Market up here on the big board and the intention of the, of the Pella Market as well. So again, a very unique concept that is being proposed by the developer this evening on this matter. And that's certainly one of the reasons why we are proposing a planned unit development for this area as well. Okay, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, when we talk about the proposed planned unit development or the PUD for it, it's very important to know that there are certain attachments to the proposed ordinance that we are considering this evening. It's very important. And like most PUDs that we've processed, what this, that you're seeing up here on the big board on slide number three, is the overall site layout for the development. And specifically what we have is we have a facility or building that's roughly 6,600 square feet right here for the Pella Market. We have roughly 14 onsite parking spaces that will be provided by the Pella Market. So when we look at the PUD, one of the key items in the PUD and the ordinance that we are considering tonight states that the developer is obligated to build the building in accordance with Exhibit 1 on here, or this exhibit that we're looking up here on the big board. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, one of the key items that we have tonight is design requirements for the proposed planned unit development. And it's very important to note when we talk about the Pella Market, the color elevations that you see up on the big board is what's included in, in the ordinance. This is what the developer is obligated to build up here on the board, the color elevations that we have. And the reason why we include these in here is, keep in mind, when we talk about a planned unit development, this is a negotiated process. The best way to explain a PUD, it differs from a traditional rezoning request. A, one of the requirements that we need to consider when you ever look at a PUD is the uniqueness of the project. This aspect, this project has a couple key aspects when we look at being unique. Again, we're looking to emulate the Gateway Market in the Des Moines Metro area. This proposal's being proposed for Pella, Iowa. It's a very unique project for rural Iowa. Second item that we have, and we're going to be explaining later on in the presentation, where this is located. This was a blighted area declared by the Pella City Council. And so when we look at the PUD and through there, and also what's been previously declared as blight by the Pella City Council and subsequent urban renewal, one of the key concepts of our existing urban renewal is to encourage or eliminate the blight through economic development. And so those are the two primary reasons why we're proposing a PUD tonight. But one of the key items that we want to make sure that we have in negotiations with the developer on this matter, and again, please keep in mind, it's a negotiated process. We want to make sure we have a firm understanding what is going to be built on the site. And that's why we have numerous references to color elevations throughout the PUD ordinance. But this was the negotiated building design for the Pella Market. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. I guess I kind of jumped the gun. But if you were to go to city code and look, ask what exactly a PUD is, again, it's a process that allows for a comprehensively designed project on this. And one of the things I want to keep in mind as we go over the PUD tonight, this is a negotiated project between the city and the developer. There's certain aspects in this PUD that are beneficial to the city where the developer's gone above and beyond the code requirements. And there's certain aspects that are necessary for the project to occur. What we're trying to do is strike a win-win with the development. A, allow the development to proceed, but also address any type of land use compatibility issues that we have that may surround the area. In addition, we also want to make sure that we're strongly aligned with the city's comprehensive plan and try to identify needs within the comprehensive plan. And we'll be touching on that point throughout the process. Again, the key takeaway of PUDs, and if we talk about, as we conclude the presentation tonight and talk about potential revisions to PUDs, keep in mind, this is a negotiated process. So, and like any negotiations, any change in terms, it takes two parties to agree to. You have to have the developer willing to make any changes to the proposed ordinance that we are considering this evening. Okay, let's go ahead, Mandy. Now, when we talk about the proposed PUD, it's very important to consider the origins of this project. And I would state, looking at the origins of this project, if you look back, when the city initially looked at this area, and the area that I'm referring to is this general area that's at the intersection of Independence and Main Street. And at the time, when we looked at this area and then we first initiated and hired a consultant to look at this, what we looked at, and the picture that you're seeing up on the big board, is the yellow house that used to sit on the Pella Market site. We had the yellow house here, and we had the Webster School District located right here on the site. We hired a consultant, that consultant was Simmering and Corey, that evaluated this general area. And the general area that they evaluated was on blight standards in Iowa law. And we received a very comprehensive report specifically on these two properties and in general, the area that we have up here, there were the diagonal lines running through on slide number six. Simmering and Corey found that this area represented blight as defined under Iowa law. Subsequent to that finding, the Pella City Council declared this area a general blighted area. And we adopted the, what was at the time, the Webster Park Urban Renewal Area. Now, one of the things that we did, and we spent a lot of time at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we spent a lot of time at the Pella City Council, we talked about the Webster Park Urban Renewal Area, the blighted area. They, one of the goals in there was a remediation of blight through economic development. And we also talked about alignment with the city's comprehensive plan that we had. So please keep this in mind as we talk about the PUD. And what we're really trying to do, you're talking about downtown redevelopment in an area that was originally declared blight by the Pella City Council. This is a very unique area. And as far as I'm aware, this is the only area that's ever been officially declared as blighted by the Pella City Council. That is an important concept to keep in mind as we discuss the Pella Market and what's being proposed tonight. So let's go ahead, Mandy. Now, when we talk about the PUD, it's very important to understand that, once again, there's certain aspects of this project that are beneficial to the city and enhancements what we would have, above and beyond city code requirements. And there's certain items that I would say, as far as when you look at this being realistic under city standards, when you're talking about redevelopment in a blighted area, in an area that's close to the city's downtown, there's certain areas under the city zoning code, the areas that are being relaxed under the city zoning code. What we're trying to do is encourage development in the, in the area. Now, one of the items we want to make sure that we'll talk about, as far as the items that have been relaxed in an effort to try to work with the development. If you look at this site, this is a very constrained site at the intersection of Main Street and Independence Street. And once again, what we're trying to create is a market up here that's very unique to the area. So when you look at the site that we have, one of the issues is onsite parking. We spent a lot of time in the PUD process looking at parking issues. We hired Beanster and Kim, specifically Bob Beanster, to look at the parking. Included in his notes to the city was one of the findings that he had, and this is something that we will need to address in the future. But his general thought in looking at our code is that parking standards for the cities that are, areas that are close to the downtown are different in reality than areas that may be in your commercial corridors. And that's important to keep in mind because under the city code, we don't differentiate between parking standards between main commercial districts such as our CC districts and districts such as this, which is CUC. Under city code, it's stated that 38 parking spaces are required. The developer is proposing 14 spaces onsite. In addition, what they also have is an agreement with South Main to the south and First Baptist Church to use the new parking lot that they have here constructed that showed up on the big board. In addition, they also have access to the First Baptist Church, the entire parking lot. So what they're requesting, as far as one of the various items that we have, is the ability to use off-site parking to satisfy their onsite parking needs on this. And we believe that there are parking spaces as designated for use by the Pella Market. But this is a key item in order to encourage economic development or redevelopment in this area. Parking is a big item. One of the things that I'd like to mention with Bob's report and looking at this matter, what he was going to think based off memory on this, he was stating that roughly based off this in his review of it is, he believes most of the time the 14 spaces onsite are going to be satisfactory for the Pella Market. But there's going to be times that there's going to be overflow on this as well. It is important to note, as a part of this too, and I believe, Mandy, we have a separate slide on this, but we also talked about pedestrian walkway traffic. And we spent a lot of time with Bob on that. And Mandy, I'm not sure if we have a slide on, on the second one. Okay, very good, she beat me to the punch. We also talked to V and K with this, and they also reviewed this area from a traffic circulation standpoint. And the overall finding is it is a constrained site with it. There's no public safety concerns noted that would be a glaring concern on it. But it's a constrained site is the reality with this situation. The Planning and Zoning Commission spent a considerable amount of time during our work session. We actually held a work session on this before we actually took official action on this. We spent a considerable amount of time during the work session talking about a pedestrian walkway or possibly a crosswalk. We also had our traffic engineer look at the pedestrian traffic and determined that the crosswalk is necessary. And just to summarize, V and K's recommendation is, is they felt that it is very, very difficult to forecast the amount of pedestrian traffic the Pella Market would have. What their official recommendation is, is that we monitor pedestrian walkway traffic.
I got your email.
Once we have an idea on it, then make a decision on a crosswalk for that as well.
We are, we're going to make up a Google Doc or something and send it to all you guys, so you guys can see those.
Hey, please, please put your phone on mute if you're on the phone. We're listening to your conversation. Thank you. Sorry, Mike.
No, no problem, Mayor. On this, and so again, the city's professional engineer recommends that we monitor the pedestrian traffic and we take action accordingly on this. Now, Beanster and K did give us potential recommendations if we determine a crosswalk is necessary. But their official recommendation at this time is to monitor the situation and evaluate it once we have an idea of the amount of pedestrian traffic that could be crossing Independence Street. Let's go ahead, Mandy. For those following at home, I'm moving to slide number nine. Now, when we look at the market, it is important to note, when we talk about in terms of comprehensive plan, one of the things, anytime you talk about comprehensive plan, you need to take a look at the comprehensive plan in its entirety. And that means all 147 pages of the comprehensive plan. In this particular case, we believe that if you look at the comprehensive plan, it identified food and beverage and dining and recreational opportunities as a need in our community, along with additional housing within our community. As council is aware, we've been very successful in building or at least approving plans for additional housing that's in the community. However, the food and beverage and dining option has not been addressed yet. So we believe that the proposed Pella Market meets a critical stopgap or shortage in the community and is a key need in the community. In addition, when we look at the Main Street, this is identified in the comprehensive plan as a commercial corridor and economic development area for the city of Pella. So from those two standpoints, we believe that the Pella Market aligns with the city's comprehensive plan. And we also believe that that determination was made previously by the Pella City Council when we established the Webster Park Urban Renewal Area as well. So from a staff standpoint, again, we believe that the Pella Market meets the city's comprehensive plan. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, it is important to note that this item was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we spent quite a bit of time with the, at the PZ Commission. And we do have some members in attendance tonight on it. And a good way to summarize this, I think, from my standpoint, based off my memory, I don't think there was a disagreement, or at least I wasn't aware of any disagreement or thoughts otherwise that the Pella Market did not meet the city's comprehensive plan. I think the consensus was, is that it did align with the city's comprehensive plan based off my understanding of the matter. However, when we look at specific items within the city's comprehensive, within the ordinance, there was a recommendation by the City Planning and Zoning Commission to remove or strike Section 3A. Now, what Section 3A is, is the design standards for the Pella Market. And you may be asking why that recommendation was being made. The recommendation of the committee at the time was to strike the design standards. And the thought was that that would require the Pella Market to go to and receive a design review permit by the CDC committee on it. And so based on my recollection and my review of that, the concern was that this could potentially establish a precedent at the time. And the recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission was to obtain a design review permit by the CDC. Now, it is important to note, we believe that the ordinance that we are considering this evening, and talk a little bit, we did not have this information at the time with PNC. But previously, when we built or when we approved the PUD for the South Main Development, which is the Webster Park PUD ordinance, we did have similar removal design standards for the Webster Park PUD ordinance. And specifically, as the housing standards are related to, we believe that those do fall in the design, housing review standards as far as the design review overall, those are removed. In addition, the Webster Park PUD also allowed commercial uses in Building 4 on the site with that. That building or the commercial uses or the design standards is also removed from that. So we do believe that this is very consistent, once again, within this urban renewal area on the design standards. Now, you may be asking to the point on the design standards, why would council want to consider this item? Well, from the standpoint, when we look at PUDs, and again, I would like to put it in proper context, this is a negotiated process. If you look at the city's standpoint, we had a blighted area. We're trying to attract developers in this area to propose significant projects for the city of Pella. And oftentimes, when developers look at this, A, they're working from a very constrained site on this, and B, they're trying to propose business models that work for their business. The design portion of the business is very, very important for them as well. And so when looking at the design standards, this was done previously for South Main on, on the matter. And then second, the thought is, since this is a negotiated process and oftentimes involves, heavily involves council, our thoughts were that the final decision on the projects and whether the projects fit in in the community should be made by the Pella City Council. Ultimately, that's where the final decision applies on any type of rezoning activity or economic development matter as well. So what is being proposed is consistent with what South Main was, very similar set of circumstances. South Main involved the Webster School, a former Webster School site. With those design standards, that was what was negotiated with the development. So we're following track history with the new Pella Market, the proposed Pella Market on this as well. Now, it is important to note that the Webster Park PUD was approved by both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council in 2018. So again, with this, we believe that it is being consistent with what was previously done in this urban renewal area. Once again, when we talk about this urban renewal area, this is the only urban renewal area that's a blighted area in the city of Pella. So that's very important to keep in mind. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. And I believe we've stated this on this, but for this matter, what we have, and just so, and to be very respectful to Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm going to be honest, in my experience in dealing with them, I've dealt very closely with the Planning and Zoning Commission over the last five years. And before that, I attended the meetings. They spend a considerable amount of effort and time on matters, and they put a great deal of thought in matters. And so I want to make sure that we recognize that, and I'd like to thank them for their efforts. But as far as tonight is concerned, one of the things, after we had the recommendation by PNC, we went back and checked with the developer on the matter. And keep in mind, the ultimate goal is to try to strike a win-win with the developer. What we're trying to do is eliminate blight in our community, redevelop an area close to the downtown. When we talked to the developer about this matter, they informed us that they've spent a significant amount of time, effort and resources on the design of the proposed Pella Market. They believe the proposed Pella Market fits in with the community. In addition, they'd like to proceed with the construction project on the Pella Market. And there's a couple of reasons for this. Anyone that is accustomed to construction contracts right now knows that there's a wide variety. The market is somewhat fluctuating right now. It's important to be able to lock in your prices and proceed in a timely fashion. That is their request tonight on the matter. From staff's perspective, we looked at this matter, and we believe that we're being consistent with the previously approved South Main Development. This ordinance is very similar to this in regards to design standards. We also realize that any type of development that moves forward, you got to have a willing developer that wants to do the project and is willing to do the project. PUDs are a negotiated process. This was a negotiated design. If we make unilateral changes to the PUD, you have to make offsetting changes to the PUD on the matter. So from our side of things, in our standpoint, it's unclear what would happen if we did eliminate the design standards on this that we have in the ordinance. So to be respectful of the Planning and Zoning Commission, our recommendation is to approve the ordinance as submitted what you have in front of you tonight. And that would include Exhibits V1, V8 of the ordinance, which includes the overall site layout as well as the design standards. And the reason for that, and our position is, we feel comfortable with this, that there will, could be a project on this site. If we go the other way on the matter through CDC, we're not sure on, on the matter, to be honest. But this is purely a council's decision. It is also important to note, under city code, the final authority for any PUD amendment on this is up to the city council. The recommendation from PNC is simply a recommendation on the matter. The final decision, final authority rests with the Pella City Council, and that's according to the city attorney. And we referenced her opinion on the matter as well. In addition, it is also important to note, without getting into a great deal of just discussion on the matter, but as far as the CDC committee, that's another committee that spends a great deal of time, effort and resources on matters, and they dedicate a large percentage of their personal time to matters. And for the most part, they've done an excellent job in our community. It is important to note that if there's ever a disagreement between CDC and an applicant, what happens in that matter is CDC is supposed to be very specific on their recommendations on the reason why a project was denied. That gets referred to the building official. If the building official refers that over to the applicant, if they are refused to do that matter, they can appeal directly to the Pella City Council. So in matters where there's a disagreement between CDC and an applicant, it's very important to keep in mind, the applicant has the ma, has the ability to appeal directly to the Pella City Council. So the Pella City Council, in any type of design review, in the event that there's a disagreement between the applicant and CDC, is the final decision maker in that matter as well. So please keep that in mind as a part of our recommendation this evening. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Okay, and I believe we've covered all these items on, on this as well. That's on slide number 12. And this was also included in, in your packet as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as options that we have this evening, Mr. Mayor, once again, and I'm on slide number 13 for those following at home. As far as the options that we have, we've listed them up on the big board. Option number one is to approve the ordinance that you have in front of you as submitted. That is city administration's recommendation this evening. So this would include the design standards for the proposed Pella Market, the color elevations that you've seen throughout the presentation. That is our recommendation. Option number two would be to remove the ordinance with Section 3A. That is the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. Option number three is if council desires to modify this ordinance in any other form or fashion. That's option number three. But I would state, before we consider significant modifications to the ordinance, please keep in mind, we have to have a willing developer that's willing to do it. This is a negotiated process. The city is not in a position to make unilateral changes to this. You have to have a developer that's willing to abide by the city's recommendations. Option number four and five are closely related in a matter, what we would suggest, if council views that they have not received enough information to make an informed decision on this matter, rather than deny the ordinance this evening, we would ask for a motion to table the ordinance until we provide the necessary information for council to make an informed decision. So, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff's presentation this evening. It's our understanding the developer also has a presentation that they would like to make, and we would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have on either before the developer's presentation or after our recommendation. It may be beneficial to have the developer's presentation follow ours and circle back for questions after that.
Okay, thanks. Mike, it was a pretty comprehensive explanation of what's going on here. Hopefully, everyone got all that information. So yeah, let's go ahead with the presentation from the developer. Yeah, come up, identify yourself, and you can walk us through that.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Woster. I'm an architect. I'm with Ship Collective. I live in Des Moines, but I grew up on a farm two counties over, in Kilkat County. So I always enjoyed coming to Pella. That was always kind of destination for our field trips and stuff during school. So I always enjoyed coming back to Pella. I thought I would share some of our inspiration, how we got to what, how the Pella Market is designed. So I kind of maybe talk about what we, what we referenced, what we looked at, and kind of how the, how the design evolved to what it was today. So these are some homes on Canal Street in Amsterdam. And this is a very dense urban setting, and so... setting, and so, these homes are done between 1500, 1800. And they kind of reference the Broke style. In Europe, Broke style was something that happened kind of after the Renaissance, during the Renaissance, where it's extreme ornate architecture. And so, they Dutch kind of took that upon themselves and kind of embraced it and kind of simplified that sort of architecture. And so, this is something you normally see in dense urban sort of settings, where you have very tall buildings, you know, four to five stories, very narrow, and the tops are very expressive. And then, as you move away from the urban areas, you come out to the smaller towns, they still kind of carry on that sort of characteristics that you might find in the denser urban areas, but the design is kind of simplified and reduced, and the scale is brought down. Still very charming. Then, as you move further out, you come into these areas where, and this is a village, where there's no streets and there's just canals, but the homes become more vernacular. You start seeing thatched roofs, things are brought down to a smaller scale, there's lots of gardens, there's use of dormers. So, the details are becoming very, very kind of simplified, more organic. And then, there's barns. So, this barn is a, it's been repurposed, but this is like some of our inspiration, we've taken some of our colors. Again, this is a thatched roof barn. Again, it's very low. The facade is very simple, the horizontal lines, very simple expression of the form Then, you move out further, you have these Dutch barns. And the Dutch barns are barns that have kind of a barrel vault on it. And a barrel vault is just a simple structural method, just for, rather than doing a gable, it kind of sheds water off of it. And what I really appreciate about these structures, that it's very simple and the structure's expressive. And so, you can kind of see where the column's at and how it kind of fans up and it kind of braces the barrel vault. It's very simple, it's very elegant, and it's very kind of minimalistic in its structure. To me, these forms really speak to me. This next one is another image of a Dutch barn, again, with the barrel vault on it, big wooden doors, simple construction, simple sort of masonry, very simple forms, very elegant and subtle. As an architect, I really appreciate forms like this, just in the pure, simple expression. And this is another example of a Dutch barn. This is showing one that's been repurposed, and again, you see a lot of stoneworks and openings, and some natural wood that's kind of expressed on it. Again, here's another example of a Dutch barn with stone, and this has an addition that's added on to it. And these are some details, close-ups of the presentation that was shown earlier of some of our, of our, of our design. And I hope you can see some of what we're picking up and some of our things that we are looking at. So, again, you're looking at the barrel vault. You can see the structure behind the clear story windows kind of expressing that sort of vault. Again, the scale's kind of reduced, bringing in some natural wood and that sort of thing to kind of go back and reference some of the architectural character of the Dutch forms that we researched. Then, the Amsterdam School of Architecture, in architectural history, it's like a very important part of time. During this timeframe, Dutch with, the Dutch movement to steel was getting very popular. It was modern architecture. So, a lot of the modern architecture we see nowadays has roots in Dutch and the Netherlands. So, again, you can see what, some of the forms that were used here with some simple brick patterns, simple curved forms, very clean, simple, elegant design. And again, you can see the image to the, to the right is our proposed design. We see some of that texture and depth kind of being referenced. Then, also, the Dutch is known for their gardens, and so, this is the garden, lots of greenery, lots of flowers, lots of layers. This is the building where we actually have plants growing, vegetation growing on a building. And this is the proposed building, and since, again, this is kind of a blow-up of some of the references that were shown in the previous presentation. And so, we have a live green wall kind of playing references to some of the gardens in the Netherlands. And it kind of feels kind of important, like nowadays, to have kind of situations. I don't know if you ever hear about people having Instagram moments or social media moments, where people have an opportunity to pose and photograph where they are and kind of, you know, document and kind of express where they're at currently in their, what they're happening in their life. And so, we wanted to provide those sort of moments because we think that's important. Also, exterior outdoor seating is very, is a very strong movement in the Netherlands, and so, we wanted to bring that to Pella. And so, again, this is the blow-up of kind of the outdoor space to the west of the main entrance. Again, a lot of greenery, kind of a garden sort of setting. There's another detailed shot. Again, at night, we'd be able to see that interior wood structure of the barrel vault. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you. All right, so, Mandy, were there any written comments received?
Only one written comment, and it was in the council packet from the developer.
Okay. Counsel, time for comments.
I have a question. As we're looking at more urban renewal and more urban light, will every PUD forgo the CDC, or is that on a case-by-case basis? Are we, that, just a question, is that part of the PUD?
Make sure my mic's all down with that. I'd be happy to answer. That's a difficult question, because I can simply attest. Keep in mind, in Pella's history, I believe this is the one area that's been designated as a blighted area by the Pella City Council. And getting to that point, it wasn't as simple as the council just designating areas as blighted. There's also consultants that got in and evaluated blighted standards under Iowa Code standards as well. So, as we evaluate areas and we develop economic development plans in the areas, I think a fair statement is, anytime you have redevelopment in an urban area that involves, well, not even blight, but redevelopment, there's always consideration of relaxation of zoning standards. So, PUDs are a negotiated process, and Councilmember Brandhorst, I'm giving you a wishy-washy answer on the matter, but what I want to underscore is that we've got a very nice community at hand, and it was no significant item to have this area declared as a blighted area. And we spent, we spent a considerable amount of time and resources on this matter, making that determination. So, before, I would say, before other areas are potentially declared as blighted, I would not, I would just like to bring the council's attention. There's quite a process, a review process even, to get to this point, but that's more of a philosophical question on a go-forward basis, I would say.
Right.
And ultimately, the decisions made by the mayor and council on that, your question.
Right. And historically, isn't it rather common for urban renewal projects, I'm talking solid urban renewal project based on PUDs and urban blight, to work very closely with their city government? It's kind of a step, they're both in step together because they usually are quite unique. They're usually on smaller parcels of land, they sometimes are on busy corridors, but I'm just thinking futuristically, isn't, isn't it, like I said, historically, the city government and the individuals doing a solid urban renewal based on urban blight and drawing in a PUD? Isn't that quite common? And historically, I'm talking about larger urban areas.
That is certainly my understanding. I think you described the process well.
So, let me try to answer your question in a straightforward fashion. And I think we have a couple of examples here in town that will address what your question, because I think your question could be answered yes or no. I think it could be, or it might not be, depending on each situation. But having been involved with the Mollengrat project and comparing that to this project, so, they're quite different projects from this standpoint. The Mollengrat project, prior to that project happening, the city of Pella purchased that site where the Mollengrat is. If you'll remember, Leiden Chevrolet was there, they were going to move out to the edge of town. And so, the city of Pella purchased that at that time. And then, what the city did, so they owned that piece of ground. So, what the city did then, after they purchased that property, they hired a city planner. Name was Marty Schukert, some of you will remember him. And they said, you know, we've got this vision of something here, design something for us. So, Marty Schukert went ahead and designed kind of what's there with the canal and the buildings, okay? So, the city was the, was the impetus for getting this project started. And what, at that point, then, the city put out requests for proposal to anybody and said, here's what we want on this site. So, the design part of that project was part of the city's saying to developers, we want to know if you will build what you see. So, the design part of it was the city's doing, so to speak, in that particular project. So, the proposals, as Mike has pointed out several times, I think it's really, really important for us to remember that a PUD is a negotiated agreement between a developer and the city. Much like the Mollengrat, and I don't remember if it was a PUD or not, I don't think it was, but the city sent out requests for proposals to develop that piece of ground into what they had already designed. And so, that's why what's there is there, because that was the city's initiative. In this case, we have a piece of property that's in the middle of town that, to be honest with, I think most of us agree, was kind of an eyesore for a long time on our main street. The developer went out, purchased the property, then came to the city and said, we want to develop this property, and here's what we want it to look like. I just, I think that's, we need to make sure we understand, there's a clear distinction there. The Mollengrat project, that design, was the city saying, you build, if you want to build there, you build this. That's different than the developer coming to the city and saying, we want to develop this piece of property this way. So, I think that's just a key difference for us to think about.
Right. Thank you.
So, again, I think for future, if we declare other areas blighted areas, it could happen either way. We, as a city, could buy a piece of property we think is blight and go to, and come up with our vision for what could be there. We would send out a request for proposal to developers, say, here's what we'd like there, are you willing to build it? Or somebody else might come and buy the property, say, here's what I'd like to build there, will you accept it?
Right.
So, I think that's really a key, a key thing to remember in this process.
That was a good word, sure.
Long-winded, but I got there.
I really appreciate the presentation, showing the genesis of what they proposed to do. I was very concerned about the parking issue, and I'm feeling more comfortable with that right now. It's awkward, but I think it will work. With, with full appreciation to the effort and expense that Marion County Bank and Casey's put forth, I view this as kind of a transitional property between South Main and Casey's. I don't see a lot of Dutch elements in South Main, modern Dutch maybe, but not traditional. I think it could work.
Mike, did the developer able to show the presentation to PNC?
Unfortunately, we were not able to do that this evening. And keep in mind, during the Planning and Zoning Commission, we've been operating electronically during our meetings. Last night was the first meeting that we had as far as the live meeting, so the developer was not able to make, to show a presentation to PNC or this presentation that you saw this evening.
So, it seems to me that more information has come since that PNC meeting, and I may want to put some of the PNC folks that voted no on the spot. Would this changed your mind, had you seen this and the other information?
Yeah, before we do that, as far as, all of the PNC members that voted no, stayed on the record, my impression is that there was pretty much unanimous consensus that this meant the comprehensive plan. I think some of the members that voted no may have voted no on concerns about the ultimate fate of the project if there was changes made. But I'll let them, the two members vote, that state that, state their opinion, but that was my impression for the no votes.
Well, I should, I should have said, I said that backwards, the yes votes, you know, by demanding that the design standards be retained.
That's probably a better idea.
I guess that's what I meant when I said that, that vote. Because it seems to me there was maybe more information that has come since that time that the elements of design are maybe showing that this is more of a Dutch unique design than maybe what was given credit for at the beginning.
Could very well have, and again, the commission members will have to speak for their individual vote, but that was my summary on what we interpreted.
Okay, so, that's, that's a good question that probably will get addressed. Any, council have any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I, I think it's quite unique. I like it, I like the design. I think it's maybe just a little bit calloused on the developer and the designer, knowing that the standards that we have set over the decades in this community as far as Dutch architecture, I think there could have been a little bit more sensitivity in the design toward that, but I love the design. I like the design quite a bit. I would hope that we could get rid of some of the gaudy signage on it. I mean, it's, that's, but anyhow, I hope that's a negotiation. But I really think, and I don't want to speak for planning and zoning, but I think that planning and zoning are having an issue. You know, a PUD in my concept and what I've, what I've witnessed over the years, is it's a negotiation for design standards. And I think the line was crossed here just a little bit in that it is now a negotiation of our process. By removing the CDC, we are changing our process, and I don't know that we have done that before. And I'm not quite sure I understand why we did it on this time, because even if the CDC turns it down flat, it's still before us. So, I'm not sure why we went, or why we're going through that, but that being said, I like the design. I am not worried about the parking mark. I think our parking standards, when you look at them, and there are places that they are needed, yes, but in a densely area and where that's setting, we're going to get all kinds of pedestrian traffic with the college in South Main. I mean, that's, it's going to be more pedestrian than vehicles, so I'm not worried about that. And one other thing, Michael, I think if I'm correct, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the South Main, being a residential, did that not, was that not exempted, the design standard being a residential?
We believe it would have been subject to the Dutch design review made in the front house.
Okay.
But once again, similar set of circumstances with PUDs. Ultimately, the decision is up to the city council. These are significant projects, usually when the PUD comes in.
Just one more thing, by passing this, what, I mean, what I see, basically, we're passing the ordinance to remove CDC from the process. The PUD is going to go on, is that not correct? Is there still negotiation going on with the PUD?
The negotiations are finalized at staff's point, from staff's perspective. This is the, this is the negotiated item, what we would say. Now, from the design standards, we'd like to say, and from staff's perspective, this is an elaborate design from our perspective. We believe that the developer is doing yeoman's job with the design, and from staff's perspective, we believe it fits.
I concur.
That's, that's our, that's city administration, I guess I should qualify, city administration's opinion on the matter.
Okay, I didn't know at what stage we were at, because this seems to just be flying through, and I, I've been, you know, I hear a lot of things from a lot of people, and I don't know if the public is really aware, but I guess we got two more readings.
Well, two more readings and keep in mind... Well, two more, two more readings, and keep in mind, we conducted a public hearing at Planning and Zoning Commission level. Tonight's a public hearing on it. Members, depending on council's actions, may have an additional opportunity to comment on it as well. So again, let's answer your question, Councilmember Steve O. Once again, keep in mind, PUDs, this is a blighted area, we're trying to work with developers on redevelopment of this. Design is an important item on the matter, and so this was a negotiated process. Please keep that in mind as we consider this item.
And I appreciate that.
So to follow up on one of Bruce's points, this South Main, the CDC review was waived on that one too, right?
Yes.
So this isn't the first time that this has happened, I think, if I can follow.
That is correct. The same design standards were waived for South Main. South Main's PUD also has commercial uses on the matter if they were to come back. Also, please keep, keep that in mind, same design standards were waived. I hate saying waived, because I think South Main looks fabulous too, and it's a very nice addition to our community. And I think it's somewhat, and I'm guilty of the terminology myself, what I would say is an agreed upon design standards. And what we're really doing, if you look at how much effort it takes to actually do a PUD near the downtown, what we're really saying is the ultimate decision on the PUD, from everything from the zoning standpoint, to variances, to the design of the building, is made by the Pella City Council in these cases. That's really what's being proposed on the matter. And I would say from the city, just the uniqueness of these projects, it's probably justified that the decision needs to be made at the council level as far as the design.
So just, I think, and it was in our packets, but on the parking issue, I think it was on the board, I, maybe I missed it, I don't think Mike pointed out, but there was, there wasn't, there's an agreement between the market, the church, and South Main to use the extra parking.
There's 38 total, right?
There's actually a written agreement that spells out how many, the spaces that are available and how they can be used. So that's, I don't, that's kind of important when you think about the parking.
Wasn't there 38 total available?
Yeah, which is what's required based on square footage. Okay, anything else? Dave, got any comments, questions?
Um, no, good discussion. I guess I do have one. Just from a, this is more of a matter of perspective in that for how many years did that yellow house fit, you know, nothing going on besides being kind of an eyesore? And someone with some vision kind of stuck their neck out and said, hey, let's, let's buy this, it's blighted property, let's come up with an idea that that would be beautiful and beneficial for the city. So I think it's great.
Okay, thanks, Dave. All right, so at this point, now we have time for some comments from members of the public. If you want to comment, I'd ask that you would please come to the podium, state your name and address, and please, please try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Waiting for me to come first. Okay, thank you. My name is John Bowman, and I'm here really for two reasons. One, I would concur that South Main is a really wonderful, fabulous project. I actually have bought a property there and delighted to be there, that's one. But I'm also here as a representative for Pella Corporation. I head up HR for Pella. I came here in December of 2019, and I will tell you that, one, I'm very delighted to be working for Pella Corporation, and I'm very delighted to be part of this community at this point in time. Pella is a company that I think all of you understand and appreciate, is growing rapidly, which is really exciting, and it's exciting for our team members who have the opportunity to grow and develop and have exciting careers for our company. But with that growth comes a real opportunity to make sure that we have the talent and the capability that we need in order to be able to execute our plans, to grow plans that we have. And, and that's a win-win for everybody if that happens. And again, I'm very impressed with this community, I'm very impressed with what's happened with South Main, but I look at this project and I say, wow, this is exciting. And I appreciate the comments that have been made by the council here tonight in that regard. And we have to have opportunities like this as a way to show how this community is evolving and to attract the level of talent and capability that we need here in the community. This just represents a great contemporary and exciting design. I think there is a lot that's with, you know, that went into the process of designing that really stays consistent with a lot of things that you would see, you know, with the Dutch era. So behalf of Pella Corporation, this type of development is important as we, again, try to attract and retain the talent that we need. We should always look for opportunities where we can bring businesses into the community like this that can have that type of impact. So very strongly encouraged that we do move forward as has been submitted by.
Thanks, John.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Nicole Pickray, and I live at 1724 Evening Court here in Pella. And I wanted to come tonight mostly because I have seen the run rings of this project, and I've also heard some of the commentary through town, right, about specifically the design. And when I look at this purely from a standpoint as a resident of Pella, what I love about it is that it really, it really personifies the thoughtfulness that we have throughout our community, right? We have, look at, look at the people here tonight, right, for the first time since COVID, I think, and all the people invested, invested in the development of this property. I think it goes to show that we have a really thoughtful community. And when you consider the design, it is a little bit of departure from the historic facades that we have seen in the past, right? But I think as the developer very, did a very good job pointing out, is that this is still rooted in Dutch architecture. And when you consider as a resident, the variety of experiences you want to have available to in town, I think this is going to offer a different vibe, right? As you go and you experience places like Liberty Street Kitchen and Georgia's Pizza and Windmill Cafe, having the addition of the market gives a different experience here in town, which I would make the jump to say keeps commerce here. It keeps people eating here and enjoying our community and really giving us another opportunity to talk about how great our community is. And so I would encourage the council to consider that as you decide how to move forward on this. I think the residents were most clear of our height, I can only speak for myself, but I love the design, the architecture is beautiful, and I think it would be a great addition to our community. I think I was under three minutes, Donna.
Mandy's doing the timing, so.
Get my glasses in here.
All right, my name is Joe Canfield. I am Pella resident, business owner, and current chairperson of the Pella Planning and Zoning Commission, and consider myself a proponent of the fellow. I'm here tonight to provide my perspective on the recommendation P and Z put forth to the city council by a pretty convincing vote of seven to two in favor and two opposed. The two opposed, I can't speak exactly for them, but it's, it's my understanding they were for the project opposed to the, the motion that was put forth to remove Section 3A from the ordinance. So can't say it was unanimous, but I mean, it was, it was my understa, that's my understanding. After reviewing what was presented to the P and Z commission, I vote in favor of the proposed ordinance with only one revision, and the following are my reasons. Number one, the location of the project falls within five overlay districts and locate one and a half blocks from one additional district overlay. The five districts, the project is located as the Gateway Corridor, the Gateway Corridor Special Review, the Design Review District, and that was the important one, the Commercial Residential Design, the Webster Urban Renewal District. My point of listing all these is that the city staff, the council, and Planning and Zoning Commission in the past had determined there is a need to tightly control the design development in this area as they have implemented five overlay districts and a sixth one nearby. The proposed ordinance as presented to P and Z would create the planned urban development and would exempt the building from design CDC review priority issuing a building permit. However, this, this was the point where it took count, it took the commission quite a bit of deliberation. And, and so City Code 165.14 covering PUDs, specifically Section 3F of the code states, no permit for any structure in the DR district, in a DR district, shall be issued until the CDC approves the exterior design. That, that caused quite a bit, that causes conflict, and, and that's going to have to be resolved by the council. So I'm not a legal expert, but as I interpret that, a PUD cannot exempt itself, the ordinance cannot exempt itself from CDC review because it's specifically listed in the PUD section. For, for me, this is the main reason I could not support Section 3A in the proposed ordinance. I did support the overall ordinance, I, again, I'm very much for the project. The second part, as I move on here, I know I'm coming up with my three minutes, I use past history as a factor in my decision-making process. Projects such as Burger King, Casey's, Culver's, Taco Bell, Walmart are all, all required to comply with requirements. Many of these projects are much further from the downtown CBD than this proposed project, yet compliance standard, compliance to the standards were required and met by the various developers. Thirdly, and I'm not, I'm not throwing anyone under the bus here, but during the presentation to the P and Z, there was no mention of how the developer attempted to comply with any of the exterior architectural requirements as required by the DR district. Instead, what was presented was the building design was an integral part to the business model, and the developer was not open to changes. I'm not clear how, and I wrote all this before I saw this presentation tonight. I am not clear how adhering to the exterior design features could or would negatively affect the business model as though my explanation was given. It seemed the developer was not being open to compromises on the exterior design features, and that was a major concern. I believe, I, Pella has made many top 10 lists of best small towns in Iowa, or best towns to live in. I believe that this is due in some part to the uniqueness created by the architectural requirements required by these special districts, district overlays. And lastly, as I stated before, the Planning and Zoning Commission put forth a recommendation. I do not find a review by the CDC to be an extraneous burden on the development process. The city council does have the ultimate decision in this matter as to whether to follow code and evenly apply that code. Thank you for the opportunity to come before council's mic.
My name's Jim Manslow, and I live at 1304 Main Street. And I just want to say, in my career, I've been very fortunate. I've gotten to live in the Netherlands for three months, and in my current position, I call on architects all across the country. And I would just have to say, I'm so impressed with this design. I really feel it captures the spirit of the Netherlands with their outdoor dining, their green space, their gardens. And I would say this building could hold a candle to anything you would see in Jackson Hole, Wyoming, Big Sky, Montana, Harbor Springs, Michigan, all very charming tourist communities. So I really hope you approve it. Thank you.
My name's Bob Smith. We live in the South Main project, and in fact, we have keen interest in this because our property, along with Mr. Bowman, is situated right at it. So there isn't anybody that wants this to be a good building more than me. I was going to make some comments about the PUD piece, but Mike did such a good job of handling that. I would just encourage the council to focus on the fact that it is the PUD, you are the last say with respect to that. You're not waiving design rights, you're getting them to commit to exhibits B through BA, which is substantial. You've seen those drawings, I mean, that is drop dead gorgeous, and they're stuck with it. And I, I think you ought to take them up on it, get them to build it. And the piece that Mike alluded to just lightly, and I think it needs some more thought with respect to it. We, in South Main project, we experienced some not insignificant delays with respect to it. As anybody who's lived through the pandemic the last 12 months knows, that's what this developer is going to face. They've already looking at costs that are, I don't, I wouldn't even want to guess, 30, 40% more than what they banked on when they started this deal. So I would encourage you to get this thing moving. And in fact, Bruce, I know you mentioned two more readings. I've encouraged council to waive second, third reading. Let's get it approved, let's get them in the ground. I want this market built, so please consider that.
Good evening, Tom Johnson. I live at 1017 Meadowcrest in the north end of town, and I'm one of the newest members on the P and Z committee, and I am one of the two that voted against the ordinance as it was passed by the P and Z. The reason I did so was in listening to Mike's comprehensive explanation of the process to eliminate planted properties, to establish a PUD, to work with a developer to the development of this project from an economic development standpoint, I felt with the amount of work that's gone into this project, it would be disingenuous of the P and Z committee and the city council if we were all of a sudden to change the terms of the game with the developer at this point. I thought that we've moved this project far enough along since 2018, when it received preliminary approval as far as South Main was concerned, that to now change the terms and conditions of how we were going to allow this project to move forward was not appropriate. And therefore, I voted against the removal of Section 3A. I was for moving the ordinance forward as submitted my staff, so.
Name is Jade Dix, 1013 Edgewater Drive here in Pella. I have the privilege of working for and representing the Kuiper, Barber, and Griffith families as a member of GentLink, and GentLink is the family office for those families and shareholders of Pella Corporation. We are also the developer of the market project. A little history here, back in February of 2018, Tim Yagi, Pella Corporation's current CEO, came to the shareholders and expressed the need to make investments in the community of Pella to allow the company to attract and retain the talent necessary to support the customers, the company's growth. You heard that from John tonight as well. In the past three years, significant investments have been made, including Liberty Street Kitchen, South Main, Prairie Ridge, and the transition of De Kinderneis and Pella Early Learning Center Daycares to new Horizon Academy with a goal of having another nationally accredited daycare program here in town. The return on these investments from a financial perspective will be negative. Thank goodness that is not how the shareholders measure success. Rather, success is measured in terms of making Pella a better place to live and work with the ability to attract and retain talent, and, which is a big and, spurring other investments in the community. By those measures, we are having huge success. Our community is thriving on a path towards growth. However, as Tim and the shareholders continually remind us, we are not done. This brings us to our current project, Main Street Market, which is an extension of Liberty Street Kitchen. It will be operated by the same operating company, Orchestra Hospitality, and they operate Gateway Market in Molling. Like the rest of the community initiatives, the motivation for this project is not to make a profit, but rather to bring amenities to the community. As Mike has clearly stated tonight and explained, this was a negotiated process with design standards being negotiated as well, as this site is a blighted site with a PUD. This site represents many challenges, one being the site is really viewable from all four sides, that increased cost and increased the time in design as well when we're looking at this site. We went through several design reviews and alternatives before landing on this plan. We are excited at how the design evolves, the Dutch architecture to a more modern design as you saw in the presentation. We have a design that uses materials that are significantly above minimum standards, and your approval on this project is very important for the product schedule, especially considering how tight things are in the construction, construction industry right now. We thank Mike and his staff for helping us through this negotiated process, and we look forward to bringing modern amenities to the community and making Pella a great place to work and live and continue that progress forward. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Donna Smith. I live with Bob Smith.
I live with Bob Smith. So I just wanted to say a couple of things too. You know, we had no intention of moving into the South Main project. It went to one of the very early meetings where they talked about it and it was such an exciting project. We put a deposit down that night and I didn't sleep thinking, oh my gosh, what have we done? What have we committed to? But it was a wonderful looking project. We are full-time Pella residents. We don't have another home, so we're here. And we were, and one of the things that appealed to us was the market that we could walk to and have that urban lifestyle, but in the charming, wonderful community that Pella is. And so I would just encourage again, not to make things so hard for these developers. And I was here a couple of years ago in support of a project called Gazelle Brewery and we know what happened to that. And it's something I think we missed and last I've heard, and you don't think you've created a lot of havoc in with your business. So I'm just encouraging us to embrace this, a developer willing to put this amount of money and time and commitment to a fabulous project. And as Bob said, we'll be looking straight at it. We'll be looking at the signs wherever the signage is, but we couldn't be more excited about this project to come. So we'd definitely encourage you to go ahead and approve the as submitted. Thank you.
I'm Mary Bukinsky Mansfield and I live at 904 West Fifth Street here in Pella. And I felt inspired to speak because I think I'm a voice that hasn't been brought up here. I'm not from here originally. I've lived here about five years now and I love Pella. It's my home. I'm choosing to live here and I'm choosing to make Pella my home. And I like to consider myself New Dutch, a honorary Dutch. I appreciate everything that's here. I appreciate the traditional aspects of it, but I definitely think, as we talk about this workforce attraction, I mean, I feel like I'm young enough, but I mean, I'm what you're trying to attract. And I just really appreciate this building and it may seem so small, but I really think it is a perfect marrying of the old Dutch and the new Dutch. And I appreciate that it still has that architecture because that's what I love about some of the other buildings. It's art. It's beautiful. It's pretty and it's clean. But I think we need to consider that this workforce is a new Dutch. You know, my least favorite saying is, if you ain't Dutch, you ain't much. You know, it should be, if you ain't Dutch, you want to be. And I want to be, so that's why I'm honorary. But I think as we do consider this and we have an investor who's willing to take that jump because they believe in us so much. You know, I picture this not just stopping, you know, with this building, but continuing down into an Oskaloosa corridor that's this new Dutch that's for this young workforce. And I just think that's really important to not only consider our heritage and the traditions, but the need for the new Dutch, the innovation to attract this and keep these people here. So, and I think it's awesome. So, great. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else going once? Anyone that's on the phone want to comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Terry Voss. I just wanted to make a comment if I could, please.
Yep, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be sure that the commission, the commission, I'm on the Planning and Zoning Commission and wanted to make sure that we were represented correctly in this matter because the commission, I just, I can't say this strongly enough, the commission was overwhelmingly supportive of the Pella market, but there was enough concern over the design of the proposal from constituents that evening that it appeared our best interest was to give it significant due diligence. One option was to, was being to get the renewal of Pella's, the review, pardon me, of Pella's CDC members to provide city council with their expertise, which we didn't have the luxury of benefiting from, knowing, I want to emphasize this, knowing that council had the authority to rule on CDC's recommendations either way. There were also several unanswered questions in our meeting related to process and Pella's design standards, which seemed to increase our emphasis on due diligence and process in an effort to avoid future litigation and best serve our community. A couple of examples are that we were told the city's zoning code ultimately defers matters of design consideration to the city council for the final decision only after an applicant developer or developer appeals a CDC decision to the city council. Another example, Mr. Canfield already mentioned, we did not hear the presentation this evening related, or from the architect, I should say. And in fact, we were actually told that the Pella market design was simply to reflect the Gateway Market brand in Des Moines. So we completely were not able to benefit from the architect's presentation this evening anyway, or either. So I'm just sharing these examples to reiterate that the P and Z commission was not opposed to the Pella market, but we did feel that it, several of us anyway, that it begged our due diligence as a commission and that a CDC review, which may still be overturned or supported by the city council, is a fair concession. So I just, I can't enforce enough that we did not have the luxury of having nearly the thorough presentation that the city council received this evening. And I think that's something that we need in the future to be able to place our votes appropriately.
Okay, thanks, Terry.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thanks for the opportunity and for all the work you're doing.
Okay, anyone else listening in? Mandy, is there any indication anyone else wants to speak? All right, then I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
DeYoung, score? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, oppose no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Randor Horse?
Yes.
Dan Struck?
Yes.
Skibow?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to item 1B. So now we will consider ordinance number 990 entitled An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by Changing the Zoning Classification of Property Located at 503 Main Street, City of Pella, Marion County, Iowa. And this is the first reading and just so that we, everyone's clear, this ordinance is, is number one up there as submitted without the amendment from the P and Z. That's what we're voting on here, so. Anything to add, Mike? No, sir. All right, so can I get a motion for approval of that ordinance?
Move placement first reading.
DeYoung?
Support.
Randor Horse? Okay, discussion.
I think we're all discussed out.
I love this. We need this. Let's do it.
I've got, I've got something to add. I'm in, I'm in Denver, Colorado for work right now and I'm in my hotel and I'm looking, I'm just right outside of downtown or just three blocks from downtown. And I'm looking out from my sixth story window over all sorts of development. There's cranes everywhere, there's buildings going up everywhere. The rest of my party that was with me, they walked downtown to eat. They're going to a Rockies game tonight, walking. And it's the kind of, obviously this is on a little bit different scale than Pella currently anyways, but you know, it's the kind of stuff that we want in Pella to reiterate what everybody else is saying, to attract and retain the kind of people that we want to bring into Pella and keep in Pella. So two thumbs up from me.
Okay, anybody else? All right, we will vote on approving the ordinance as read. So all in favor, please say yes, oppose no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randor Horse?
Yes.
Dan Struck?
Yes.
Skibow?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Well, I'm going to do my traditional. I think it's time, like it was mentioned, with materials rising and that we consider waiving the second, third readings of the ordinance.
Okay, is there support for that motion?
Support.
Okay, so it's been moved and supported that we waived the second, third readings of the ordinance. Any discussion?
Yeah, I really think that's a huge mistake, Calvin. I think this, I don't know if you've been out, but I've gotten lots of feedback from a lot of people and I think we need to give this time. I'm also looking building, but I went through the process and it's taken me a couple, three months extra. That's part of it. I think it's a mistake for us to, let's at least give another reading, please.
I agree with the second reading.
I think we got to have at least a second reading.
You do.
This is, there, I know we're in favor of this, but not the entire community.
Well, I guess that's, we're the decision makers if we're in favor, but I think we've given a lot of time for folks to come and talk and get their opinions, so that would be my reason to be in favor, but myself.
I agree with you, Calvin. I haven't heard one comment negatively about the actual building itself, other than the signage. And so.
Well, but planning and zoning, did you listen to planning and zoning? I mean, there was a lot of discussion there. I just think there's a lot of discussion and I am not against this, but I think we as leaders of this community have to allow public input. And we've got good public input, but I think we need to do at least one more reading. Just my thought. I think we can hurry and we can create more problems than what we solve, but people need to voice their opinion. Just my humble thought.
I think putting it on another reading doesn't express opposition. I think it allows us to do what we were elected to do and that's listen and represent citizens. And by not putting it on the second reading, I feel that it isn't going to allow us as individuals to get the feedback that I think is needed. There's no one here that's opposing it. At this point, I guess I would say this, the second reading isn't about us, it's about everybody else. It's a fabulous plan we all was reading.
And I would say, Lynn, the feedback I get is that this was what we wanted for years. So why wait? You know, so I'm representing the feedback that I've received, not just leading up to this meeting, but why I ran in the first place. And so the feedback I'm representing is, we need this, we need this now, let's go.
Right. But you think two weeks is going to make that much difference?
I just wanted to share my perspective.
Yeah, no, but that's what I'm saying. It's just two weeks. That's all. And I agree, I've gotten very positive feedback. Just would love it if we could give individuals the opportunity to say, this is great, like, you know, just, you know.
More would say, this is great if we keep moving.
Yes. Yes. Well.
That's just me.
Same.
Okay, anything else? Dave, comments? Don't want to forget you up there in the Mid-All High City. Okay, so the motion is made and supported that we waived the second, third readings. All in favor, please say yes, oppose no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Struck?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
No.
Randor Horse?
No.
Skibow?
No.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Okay, motion failed. Moving on to item 2A, public hearing regarding the Ousport Alley Sewer Storm and Paving Project bids. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'd like to refer the council's attention to the big board for the side effect. And for those following at home, I'm on slide number 32. Ms. Mayor, the board stated, tonight's public hearing that we have actually, the resolution that we'll be approving is for the Ousport Alley project award this evening. And just to explain the overview of this project, what we're considering doing is actually significant infrastructure upgrades in our downtown. Everywhere on slide number 32 that you see, there's quote over here, Main Street is over here, East First is over to, right over here to the East over here, and Washington Street is to the north. The area that we're looking at improving is actually this gray shaded area, everywhere that you see in color here. And essentially what we're going to be doing with the project is we're going to be installing underground stormwater detention in the area that's sorely needed in our downtown. In addition, as far as at Ousport Alley, we're going to be replacing the alley and as a part of this, we're also going to be replacing the sanitary sewer main. Now, as far as the project and the overall scope of the project that we have listed up here on the big board as well, it is important to note that we recently conducted a bid letting on the project. We received one bid for the project. Now, as far as the base bid that you see referenced up there on their base bid was just shy of $881,000. And that was for, the difference between the base and the alternate, is the base bid is a concrete street or a concrete alley that we would have. So the surface material after the job would be a concrete alley, would look similar to most city streets in our community. The alternate, which was just shy of $941,000, is to redo the alley and brick on there as well. So our engineer's opinion of probable cause, you'll notice that both bids, both the base and the alternate were below the opinion of the engineer on the project. So again, we received only one bid on this as well. And Garden and Associates is recommending awarding the contract to TK Concrete as the engineer does not leave if we rebid this project, that it would result in lower cost to the city as well, within both bids being below the engineer's estimates of the revenue we received from Garden and Associates to receive. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, our recommendation this evening to the fellow city councils to proceed with the alternate and redo the alley as a brick alley. And for those of you that participated in the Pella Streetscape and planning process that we did a few years ago, we spent a considerable amount of time in that committee looking at potential improvements in the downtown and as streets get repaired in the downtown, the alleys get repaired in the downtown, our committee spent quite a bit of time discussing whether that street would be ultimately a brick street or potentially urban or a concrete street. The area that we've identified for the Ousport Alley was identified as a brick street in our, by our committee on it. In fact, you can see the existing up here that was pictured. This came straight from the Streetscape Committee, which is redoing the alley as a brick street right here. And we also threw in a mural that was discussed with the committee as well. That's not a part of the project, we're simply talking about the street surface. So for city administration's recommendation, our recommendation is we follow the lead that was established with the downtown Streetscape Committee that had spent a considerable amount of time on this and identified a brick street for this. But I would be stated that if council would like to discuss this item, I believe Denny and Jack, that it is safe that we can table this item for two weeks as we discuss this decision if you'd like more time to consider it. But city administration's recommendation is to proceed with the alternate. Council were to proceed with the project this evening on this, we would likely issue a notice to proceed right around May 10th or shortly after 2:00 of time. And everything, if everything were to go as expected or as planned, rather, we'd be looking at a final completion in late fall of 2021, which is approximately 175 working days. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes our presentation this evening. Be more than happy answering questions, questions the mayor or council may have on this item.
Thanks, Mike. Mandy, any written comments? Counsel, comments?
Calvin, should we use TK before?
A lot.
A lot.
Yep.
Long bid?
A lot more man, a lot more equipment than they used.
Okay.
I think the last one was what, worth between Broadway and intersection? Oh yeah, the Buber cold sack down the bar, kind of similar, not so cable.
They were the only bidder, right?
That is correct.
Hey, they're local.
A lot of people looked at it, it was just tight quarters, tight quarters.
Anything else, counsel? Any comments from a member of the audience? If you have it, please come to the podium. Name, address. Anybody on the phone listening in want to comment? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Mansfield?
Support.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randor Horse?
Yes.
Skibow?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes. Yes. Motion passed.
Okay, moving on to resolution number 6272, and this will, this is the Motion passed. Okay, moving on to resolution number 6272, and this will, this is the alternate bid, right?
That is correct, sir.
But it's for the brick, for the brick street. Everybody understands that this is for the alternate, okay. So, resolution, uh, resolution number 6272 entitled Resolution Approving Plan Specifications, Form of Contract, Estimate of Costs, Receiving of Bids and Making Award of Contract for the Ousport Alley Sewer Storm and Paving Project. Assume nothing to add, Mike?
That is correct, sir.
Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
DeYoung, support. Discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
Vanstruck?
Yes.
Steva?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yeah.
Motion passed. When do you anticipate they'll start?
Around, uh, May 10th, Dave.
May 10th?
Yeah.
You're gonna wait till after two of the time, thank you. Okay, moving on to item 3A, public hearing regarding the 218th Avenue and Neil Drive reconstruction project bids. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to refer the council's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. For those following at home, I'm on slide number 34. As Mayor DeWort stated, tonight's public hearing is pertaining to the urban, well, actually, the proposed improvements on 218th Avenue and Neil Drive with this, in essence, what this contract could do, or this resolution would approve the plan, specifications, form of contract, also accepts the bids, as well as the engineer's estimate for the project as well. Now, as far as the project is concerned, we do have a map of the area that we're looking up here on here. Idaho Drive is located right up here, and the highlighted area is the scope of the project. But ultimately, what's being proposed is the street currently, if you were to drive out there, contains both an asphalt overlay as well as a significant portion of the road is a gravel road. What we're proposing to do is install a new urban cross-section street, so that is a fancy word for a concrete street, on there along with sidewalks for the area as well. Shady Burke subdivision is located down here, so again, the project would extend past the Shady Burke subdivision. In addition, it would pass through the geographical boundaries right here, as far as the main soccer complex, or the city soccer complex fields as well. Overall, the project involves roughly 2,300 linear feet of paving as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the bids on this project, we were successful in receiving several competitive bids, a little bidder that we are recommending this evening is Wicks Construction. Their bid was just shy of $1,283,000. The high bid on the project was just over $1,466,000. And the important point to note is, everybody on this was actually below the engineer's opinion of probable cost for the project. It's always nice when that happens in the matter. So the engineer's opinion of probable cost was $1,515,000. It's our understanding that our engineer on the project, Garden and Associates, is recommending that we award the project to the lowest responsible bidder, which in this case is Wicks Construction, the amount of $1,282,721. Staff is also in agreement with this recommendation tonight, Mr. Mayor. And now, if approved by the city council, the notice to proceed will be issued on roughly right around May 3rd with the final completion of the project scheduled for November 1st, which constitutes roughly 80 working days. And I believe that constitutes our presentation this evening. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor or council may have on this item.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Any written comments, Mandy?
No written comments.
Okay. Counsel, oral comments, questions?
Good bid, Jack. You ought to sharpen your estimating tool.
He just did that to make us feel, you know. I think we're getting it.
I guess, okay, aside, Jack, why do you think this is happening?
So far, they should receive good, good numbers on paving jobs. Underground work, which is the Ousport Alley, underground work, is coming in a little bit higher, at least, God, we've done this so far this spring. And, and the Ousport Alley was, it was just tight quarters.
Wicks did Airport Runway last year. And a lot of the same team, I think, worked with them, so it went real well out there.
But Wicks must have liked the bakeries?
They're also doing a job on Highway 92 just west of Los Angeles, so they're in the area, and probably help drive the bus down.
Good. Anything else? Any comments from any member of the audience? Anyone listening in? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Manstruck?
Support.
Rander Horst, discussion? All in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Vanstruck?
Yes.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
Steva?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yeah.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to resolution number 6273 entitled Resolution Approving Plan Specifications, Form of Contract, Estimate of Costs, Receiving of Bids and Making Award of Contract for the 218th Avenue and Neil Drive Reconstruction Project. Assume nothing to add, Mike?
You are correct, sir.
Okay, can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Manstruck, DeYoung, discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Vanstruck?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
Steva?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yeah.
Score?
Yes.
Motion passed. Has anybody figured out how the traffic's gonna work out there all summer, or you got?
Yeah, we've got a plan.
Okay.
A lot of phases. But everybody's gonna go south for a long time.
Yeah.
All the way around.
All right, moving on to petitions and communications, we have a special event permit request for 2021 Tulip Time Festival. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, as you stated, tonight's request comes to us from the Pella Historical Society. It's actually for the 2021 Tulip Time Festival that is currently scheduled for May 6th through the 8th. It is important to note that council order approved this motion this evening, the setup for the event, will actually begin on May 4th at 5:00 p.m. And the event as we know it, by the kind of logistics we're taking care of, would include a May of 11th of this year. Now, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. List it up on the big board, and this is also included in your packet over the requested street closures during the street, during the event. Be more than happy to answer any questions on those that council were to have that, questions on, but the detail was included in your packet. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. For those following at home, I'm on slide number 38. In addition, the promoter is also requesting a hold of clean and court profession each day of the event, and we're just specifically noting the streets to be closed during that proposed event. Now, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the closures, we want to make sure council is aware of what's being proposed with the event this year is the closure of the West Second Franklin Street intersection, what we have shown on the big board on slide number 39. In addition, complete closure of West Market Park is also being proposed starting on May 5th through May 9th. Now, in essence, the Tulip Time Steering Committee is requesting this to assist with security of vendor inventory. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, unique to this year's celebration, the promoter is also requesting a hold of fireworks display on Friday, May 7th. It's our understanding that they're also proposing the event in inclement weather on May 7th. As far as a potential alternate date, that would be Saturday, May 8th as well. We are very familiar with the proposed vendor, Janam Fireworks is the same vendor that the city uses for 4th of July fireworks as well. It is important to note that the proposed location for the fireworks is the Central College Practice Field, which has been used previously by Central College on this as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, in summary, Mr. Mayor, all pertinent departments have reviewed the application as presented this evening. We are recommending approval of the application. It is important to note that the insurance certificate have also been received, and we are recommending, as it goes without saying, for typical special events, that it is conditional based on if there's anything related from the governor's office or any type of local issues or orders in relation to the COVID-19 pandemic, things may change on it. So the recommendation that we have tonight is conditional only, only in regards to the COVID-19 and the current pandemic that is taking place across the nation. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes our presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor or council may have on this item.
Thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval of this request?
So moved.
Support.
Rander Horst, DeYoung. Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Vanstruck?
Yes.
Steva?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yeah.
Score?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving to the resolution number 6274 entitled Resolution Temporarily Closing Public Ways or Grounds in Connection with a Special Event Known as 2021 Tulip Time Festival. May I take that ahead?
No, sir.
Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Support. Rander Horst? I got lost here, hang on a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Score?
Yes.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
Vanstruck?
Yes.
Steva?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yeah.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 2, we have a special event permit request for the Cellar Peanut Pub Tulip Time. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to refer the council's attention to the big board on this. And for those following at home, I'm on slide number 42. Tonight's request comes from the Cellar Peanut Pub. It's located at 629 Franklin Street. It's a very similar request that we received in previous years from the Peanut Pub. And actually, what the applicant is requesting is to have an outdoor area that would be open from 10:00 a.m. to midnight, starting on May 5th to May 8th, in conjunction with this year's Tulip Time. Now, as far as what we have, as far as the area that this would be taking on, the highlighted area that we have in the blue is the city property. The event, it's my understanding, help me if I'm wrong, Mandy, would be the green highlighted area. Is that correct?
So, this whole area?
This whole area, okay. So that includes the city property that we have on this, and that's the reason for the special event permit request that we have this evening. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. It is important to note that the promoter is utilizing, similar to previous years, an eight-foot tall fence to close the service area. Now, as far as the city staff's position on the matter, Mr. Mayor, it is important to note that the applicant has obtained the letter of support from the Pella Historical Society, that is the sponsor of Tulip Time. In addition, all pertinent city departments have reviewed this application. Fee and insurance certificate have been received, and we are more than happy to make any conditional approval upon the event. And condition would be approval of the temporary outdoor liquor license extension, that I believe is on the agenda this evening for consideration as well. In addition, second contingency, very similar to Tulip Time, if there's an order either through the governor's office or a local order in relation to the COVID-19 pandemic that changed the event, the city reserves the right to cancel the event under those circumstances. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation this evening. Be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor or council may have on this item.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Manstruck, Rander Horst, any discussion? I know Marty's here, if anybody has a question about it. Or is there anything you want to add? Okay, all in favor of approving the request, please say yes. Oppose, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Vanstruck?
Yes.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
Steva?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. Well, moving on to item 3, temporary outdoor service extension on a Class C liquor license for the Cellar Peanut Pub. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for those following at home on slide number 44. Again, this extension is closely related to the previously approved special event request. So this is the temporary outdoor sales and service request. Again, it's for May 5th through the May 8th. It's very similar to what's been done in previous years as well. And once again, as far as the condition is concerned, since council did approve the previous agenda item on there, the first condition is eliminated. The second one would be still in place. If council were to choose to approve this event, it would still be subject to any orders issued by the governor of the state of Iowa or local orders in consideration of the COVID-19 pandemic. So with that, Mr. Mayor, be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor or council may have on this item.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Rander Horst, support. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Vanstruck?
Yes.
Steva?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yeah.
Motion passed. Item 4, temporary outdoor service privilege on a Class B beer permit for the Winehouse. Mike?
Okay. And once again, this request has been applied for in previous years as well. Tonight's request comes to us from the Winehouse. It's located at 615 Franklin Street. The dates for this request were May 6th through May 8th, and the purposes, the request is to allow additional social distancing. Actually, what we had here, but once again, we do have a picture of the area of the Winehouse, proposing their outdoor service area on this, with this. And from the city staff standpoint, this is very similar to what was previously submitted for Tulip Time with the Winehouse as well. It is important to note that the applicant is going to be fully located on private property, and will be enclosed with a temporary fence, which would meet state requirements as well. From his approval process, the application has been completed online with the state of Ireland. We are recommending conditional approval of this request, subject once again to any changes with the COVID-19 pandemic that may make the canceling the event, changes to the event. We reserve the ability to do so. So with that, Mr. Mayor, be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor or council may have on this item.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Rander Horst, DeYoung, discussion? All in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Vanstruck?
Yes.
Steva?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yeah.
Score?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution number 6275 entitled Resolution Approving a First Amendment to the Original Partnership Agreement between the city of Pella and Wonderspellen for the purpose of constructing Phase 2 playground equipment for the Kiwanis Park Improvement Project. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, as Mayor DeWort stated with this resolution, we do amend our current agreement with Wonderspellen on that, with this. And what we're proposing ultimately with the Kiwanis Park Improvements is to construct an all-inclusive playground at Kiwanis Park. And Wonderspellen has been very instrumental with it, and it's going to be a significant project for the city of Pella, a very important avenue level of donations that's being proposed by the group this evening. Now, as far as the item that we're talking about, this proposal is very similar to what we discussed during policy and planning on March 25th at this time. So at that time, council indicated an agreement to move forward with the proposed amendment this evening. But really, the item and the major item that we have this evening, when we've talked about the agreement, is the 2019 agreement requires or aligns the city's maximum contribution at $320,000. And that's probably one of the bigger items that we have for discussion tonight. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as background on what's being proposed with this amendment is we have an opportunity to add the playground equipment for Phase 2 of the project. And as far as the Phase 2 project, we have a board, a diagram of the proposed project is the boundaries within this orange highlighted area that we have here. Now, as far as the ultimate change order that we have, this is going to be presented this evening. It's very important to note that Wonderspellen is proposing to pay for most all the proposed change order this evening, but there is a small contribution that's being asked to the city of Pella on this again. So that's very important to keep in mind as far as the ultimate funding of the proposed change order to add the playground equipment to the project as well. So Mandy, let's go ahead and move ahead to slide 48. And as we said, Phase 2 includes all the additional playground equipment, and we do have a color elevation of the playground equipment for council's reference as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the resolutions that we are considering this evening, the first resolution on there would be Resolution 6275. This would have been our partnership agreement. An amendment ultimately increases the city's financial contribution for the project from $320,000 to $350,000. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as Resolution number 6276, that's the agreement to amend for the engineering fees with Snyder and Associates. As far as the original agreement that we had with Snyder and Associates, it was just shy of $75,000. To propose or make for the additional playground equipment for Phase 2, it's an additional $2,500 in engineering fees for the project, which leaves us with a revised agreement. Council order approved it as $77,400. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. And Resolution number 3 would approve the change order with employer construction, and actually has two items in here. We have the Phase 2 equipment changes that we have right here, and then as well as we're doing a fence substitution, which is actually a deep that. So change order number 1, the overall contribution is a hundred and just over $134,000. Council order approved this change order would be left with a revised construction contract of $1,316,498. If you throw in the engineering fees for the project, you can see we're almost basically just shy of 1.4 million of city known cost on the project. The cost actually for this project would be even more than this. Please keep in mind and consider all these amendments, if the city's contribution is $350,000. This is going to be a significant and a fantastic improvement for our community as well. So please keep that in mind. And Mandy, do we have any additional slides? Okay. So, city staff's position on this is we are recommending approval of three resolutions on the agenda of council's consideration as well. And I believe we summarized everything, well. And I believe we summarized everything, but in all, since the whole three resolutions have been proposed this evening, the amendment to the contract, Wonderspellen, also the engineering fee amendment, as well as the change order number one with required construction. We talked about this on March twenty-fifth. Our recommendation is to approve all three. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. We'd be more than happy answering questions the mayor or council may have on this item.
Okay, Mike, thanks. Can I get a motion for approval of resolution number six-two-seven-five?
So moved.
Manster, score, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Manster?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Steva?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to resolution number six-two-seven-six entitled, "Resolution Approving an Amendment to Professional Services Agreement with Snyder and Associates for Engineering Services Associated with the Kiwanis Park Improvements Project." I assume you covered everything you need to cover, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Branderhorst, score, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Manster?
Yes.
Steva?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to resolution number six-two-seven-seven entitled, "Resolution Approving Change Order Number One With Quire Construction for the Kiwanis Park Improvements Project." Again, Mike already explained that, so is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
De Young, Branderhorst, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
De Young?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Manster?
Yes.
Steva?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Motion passed. Got off easy, Fred. Didn't have to say a word. Okay, moving on to resolution number six-two-seven-eight entitled, "Resolution Approving Change Order Number Four With Synergy Contracting for the Five Field Road Water Main Improvements Project." Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As Mayor Ward stated, the resolution that we're considering this evening would approve change order number four for the Five Field Water Main, Five Field Road Water Main project. Now, big picture, looking at this diagram on page fifty-three, what we're essentially doing is we're extending the sixteen-inch water main to the western edge of our community. Purpose of this project is to provide enhanced fire flows for the western edge of our community as well. Now, as far as the change order that we are considering this evening, it's an amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty cents, and it removes, basically, it's due to an interconnection. It enhances an interconnection system to where the Iowa Regional Utilities Association's utility interconnects with it. As far as this connection, Denny, if you can help me out and explain the connection, that it was necessary to connect to their system, was my understanding.
In the initial review, they wanted to leave their, the original pit alone. It was small. We put in a larger pit in the original plan just south of the old pit, so we're putting in the new fire flow meter, coming out of it, going to the old pit, so that it can go to their facility and take the hard right, go back to our facility. Well, they decided when we were just about done with everything, that was cumbersome, and they weren't going to approve it unless we removed the old pit entirely, which is much cleaner, much better deal. What did they do that in the first place was a better deal. So, that's what the twelve thousand's about. A little pricey. Thought we could get it done for more like eight or nine, but it's one of those deals. It's the last piece. We're now connected. We're ready to, for water flow, the sticks start flying per winter for the next week or two. So, we need to refresh that sixteen inch pipe, but we're ready to go from there.
We get that load bed back slowly but surely, eh?
Yeah.
All righty. So, let's go ahead to slide fifty-four. Mandy, please. I believe we have a contract summary, maybe, hopefully we do. Okay. Council order approved this change order. We'd be left with a revised construction contract of just over eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. In addition, it is important to note, as far as the substantial completion date, that would be established through March twenty-sixth of this year. And, Mr. Mayor, it is important to note that we are recommending approval of the change order. So, with that, we'd be more than happy answering questions the mayor or council may have on this item.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Branderhorst?
Score.
Score. Discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Manster?
Yes.
Steva?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item five, receipt of bids following, followed by resolution number six-two-seven-nine entitled, "Resolution Directing Sale of one million, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar general obligation urban renewal capital loan notes, series twenty-twenty-one A. That amount is subject to adjustment per terms of offering." Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I'm going to put on the spot our assistant city administrator on the spot and ask him to cover both of these items if he could. He has some good news. He has some good news to report to council. And I believe our financial advisor is also potentially on the line as well. So, Mr. Michael Maloney.
Yeah, Michael.
But go ahead, Cory.
We took bids today for two bond issuers. The first one is a notch exceed two point three million dollars in urban renewal capital loan notes for the Lally project, the North American headquarters. On the slide there is the proposed uses and funding sources, and those are consistent with what they were last, or the previous time. So, once again, goodies rated us double eight-three for the city's general obligation bonds, which were issued in the report on March twenty-fourth. They note the city's consistent financial performance, insurance, and low debt, and less assets for the city's financial improvement. The report makes note of the community growth, the city's tax base, and strong fiscal management through the COVID-19 pandemic, and all the rationale for the, for such a strong. There's three bids that we received today. The winning bid was Northland Securities at just over one point six-five percent, and that's on a twenty-year note. As I mentioned, it's payable through June first of twenty forty. The annual debt service payments will be issued for tax increment financing in the Lally project, and I don't believe that those may impact the city's property tax rates. However, because it is a general obligation bond, council could utilize it down where we're working in the future if that was desired. That's it on that one.
And, Mr. Mayor, and Cory, is Michael Maloney on the phone?
He is, yeah.
I'd like to give Michael, as our financial advisor, an opportunity to comment on the bids and the city's credit rating. And so, Mr. Maloney, could you please comment?
Yeah, I'll be short and sweet on the actual bonds, because I think Cory did an excellent job summarizing. The one thing that I would add is that the three bids comprised twenty-three financial institutions. They bid together in syndicates, and those bids from those institutions actually represented bidders from fourteen states. So, you had really wide distribution there, and I wanted to make sure that was pointed out as something that's kind of between the lines. I do want to highlight the credit rating of the city. As you can imagine, there's downward pressure on credit ratings nationally and globally due to the COVID-19 pandemic. That being said, the city was able to maintain this extremely high credit rating. That's the fourth highest credit rating, and a factor that I've pointed out to staff and wanted to reiterate to the council here this evening is that in all the items that the city can control through council and staff management, you're at the highest level in terms of those values, so the triple-A level. So, what really, the only difference size there is your scale. So, the population valuation truly max you out at that double eight-three level, and the city continues to be very strong on everything that it can't control from that standpoint. That's really it on A, and I'm happy to add any comments or respond to any questions on A until we get on the twenty-one B series. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anything else? No, sir. Okay, can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Manster?
Score.
Score. Discussion?
One point six-five. Free money.
It's pretty, almost free money, is right. Pay that principal back within flight of dollars. It's kind of free money. Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Manster?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Steva?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item six, receipt of bids followed by resolution number six-two-eight-zero entitled, "Resolution Directing Sale of two million, one hundred and thirty thousand general obligation capital loan notes, series twenty-twenty-one B." And again, that amount is subject to adjustment per terms of offering. Mike?
Once again, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and turn this over. I have a moment, of course. Of course, still freedom of presentation.
Thanks. So, we're going to decide and reset the bids today for notch exceed an amount of two point four million dollars in general obligation capital loan notes. And that is to fund the improvements of Turner, Mead, and Neil Drive, as well as the, the corporate plans of the home improvement. So, listed above is the use of funds and the funding sources. They're consistent with the city council's philosophy. Again, there's three bids. The winning bidder was Robert W. Baird at just over one point six-three percent. We're recommending approval of that award. And once again, those notes will be payable through June first of twenty forty. The annual debt service payments were a part of the city's budget. We went through that the last year, therefore, we don't believe that they'll be in any contact with the city's property tax rate. And because the, because of both bonds or general obligation bonds, the city could use the debt service levy until the last item to pay for the debt services. That's it?
Thanks, Cory. Michael, any comments about these?
No, very, very similar composition. Just swapped who was first and second place on the order. Overall, same very extremely low rate there, excellent performance for the city, below what we've been planning on. I'd just like to conclude that, want to thank staff for their work on this one. A lot of paperwork that goes back and forth behind the scenes here with me, the attorneys, and the rating analyst, and kind of took the whole group effort there. So, a special thanks to Mike, Cory, and Mandy for putting all their work into this one to make life easy for everybody. Thanks.
Okay, we appreciate those comments, and thank you for your help on these also. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
De Young, Manster, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
De Young?
Yes.
Manster?
Yes.
Steva?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number six-
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Mike. Resolution number six-two-eight-one entitled, "Resolution Approving Task Order Four to the Engineering Service Agreement with HDR Engineering for the Pella Municipal Airport Automated Weather Observing System Replacement Project." Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to go ahead and turn this item over to Mr. Danny Byer for review. The fellow city council. So, Danny, if you could lead through the presentation on this one?
Yeah, it is a read. This is to replace our current that's over twenty years old. It's had some routine failures. If you watch the movies being on national weather shows, and you know it's blowing thirty-five gusts like crazy out, and it reads three, their information's coming from our equipment. We might be living riding hills and not going that way. Anyway, it definitely, it's highly important to, no doubt, to aviation, you know, wind speed directions, very critical. Parts are no longer available. So, we're due. Another important thing, we can move this to the new airport upon moving. As you can see, we've got about twenty years out of this one, so we hope this one's good for another plane. Unfortunately, we do have to hire an engineer because of specs per FAA. We do plan on using entitlement money. So, I guess if there's any questions, there will be a ten percent match locally. So, let's all say and done that, yeah, ten percent of a one-six-eight. We hope the equipment's a little cheaper than that, but we do have to go through a competitive bid process.
Okay, thanks, Danny. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Branderhorst, score, discussion? What kind of a process is this to get it done?
It's just HDR sit-down. Like I say, the spec, a lot of it's cookbook, too, but you can't mess up the process.
I mean, how long would it take to get it done?
I'm guessing the equipment's probably on the shelf somewhere.
Oh, okay. Can happen quickly, then.
Well, we hope so.
Yeah. Okay. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Manster?
Yes.
Steva?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. We have some bills to pay. Abstract bills number two-zero-seven-six. Can I get a motion for approval?
Move to approve and issue warrants.
Branderhorst?
Support.
De Young, any discussion, questions?
Klein Electric refund overpayment. What's that about? It was, in other words, Klein Electric paid us, and then we had a refund? It's overpayment invoice five forty.
So, I think we issued payment twice somehow. I think we thought there was a lost check.
Oh, okay.
And then canceled it and then created.
I got you. Thank you.
Only Cory would remember every check written. The list is about nine pages long, this for this.
Amazon liked this also. I got one other quick question. The HVAC at the pool, Janap. I see that there was, Cunningham was there. Are we having any success with better controlment of the environment in there, or is, since our remodel, and, you know, we've put a bunch of bucks in there?
I think the, the new system is more efficient and it works well, but we, on this incident, we struggled to have a valve replaced because it was located outside, and that was the weekend, four oh zero. So, we had a tough time getting there to come in and do the work. And then part of the problem is, is that the software end wasn't able to be remotely logged into because we had previous issues with IT that couldn't set this up for us. So, now with the new IT, they got it set up to bring it in, so now we can troubleshoot quicker.
So, do you feel, though, that, that, I mean, we're having, I mean, that's been a quagmire for a lot of years.
Oh, yeah. I mean, as far as the, the interior atmosphere is way better, it's good. You know, I mean, it's still humid in there. It's a pool, but the air circulation's much better, and it does feel better in the non-pool area.
That's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Manster?
Yes.
Steva?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member have any other business we need to discuss tonight? Any member of the public have any other business that you'd like to bring to the attention of the council tonight?
You know, Don, I would like to say one thing.
Okay.
Since we've met, what, Tuesday or Thursday, about two weeks ago, I've had several people have asked me quite a few things. What's the status of our SUV or our URV? People have an interest in having URV. And I want to preference any statement that is made here that staff is up to their eyeballs, and we can't do anything more on staff. But I, I think as council and mayor, we would do well if we kind of directed staff in some of these issues. I mean, I'm glad to see that the park is on here, but also dog park. Cricket? That's been a year. What's happening with the dog park? There's also bike paths. I hear, you know what, now there was a proposal with, with out east of town or west of town. I've had several people ask me that, and I have to be honest, and I don't know if I dare say this, but I had two people ask me to the community center again. And after two weeks ago, I don't know if I dare bring it up, but I'm going to bring it up because I represent the people. And I think that would be good if we could, if we could work some of these things in our agenda at, at leisure, and that's not the right word, because the staff doesn't have the leisure to be leisured. But if we could work some of those things in, I would appreciate it. I know quite a few people around town that would appreciate it also. Thank you.
Yeah, we've, we've definitely had conversations about all of those projects, and are trying to figure out how to-
We got to fit them in here.
Yeah, we fit them in.
The development, we've been spending a ton of time, and we've been doing a lot.